Thank you everybody, I'd like to call order a regular meeting of the Board of Education, the Goshen Central School District being held here in the District Administrative Building on Monday, August 7th, 2023 at 6:30pm, also being live streamed on YouTube. Alright, I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence directly following. For Ms. Carol Diamond, who is a retired math teacher from a high school who has recently passed away.
We must define the United States as our republic, the richest state, one nation under God, and that is so long, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody. Do we have anyone signed up for privilege of the floor tonight? Alright, I would just like to remind anybody who's here, if they'd like to sign up for privilege of the floor, a sign up sheet is right over here in the front. I would also just like to say already that when we sit here and we listen to our community members come up and share their comments, thoughts and concerns, we truly take them to heart. Nothing falls on deaf ears, so we do thank you for sharing everything that you have in the past and we look forward to continue to hear from you. Alright, next moving on, I'll jump right into the president's report. So tonight I just have a few things to let everybody know about. We've been really working very diligently with our facility committee and our policy committee on our conduct. We've had a lot of meetings further discussing what we find here plan and our total conduct. policy committee on our code of conduct. We had a lot of meetings further discussing what we find here plan and our code of conduct. We'll go over that in a little bit more detail entirely. Also, the Board of Education has put together a time to do some additional governance training. So in addition to the standard required training that every board member has done, we've also initiated putting together additional governance training with our building admins and our team here that we look forward to having again in September. Next, I'd like to move on to the legislative update, Mr. John Sullivan.
Thank you. No update right now. The next meeting is scheduled for September 6th. So once we get through that, I will move on to providing updates.
Right, fantastic. Thanks a lot. Now, we're going to move into any other board member committee reports.
For the building committee report, we have a couple of meetings that are set up that will go over the five-year plan that are forthcoming, and the safety committee, we haven't had a meeting since the last one. We will begin one on Saturday soon. Meet with the local police and fire members and our district administration.
For the policy committee, we have been meeting with community members. We have had three meetings so far and have our fourth meeting scheduled this week. We've been addressing the code of conduct and having community input on some changes, and our hope is and our goal, which I think is attainable, is to have this up and running and ready to be passed for the start of the new school year. So it's going very, I think it's going very well.
All right, fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, now we'll move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Curtis Coats.
Thank you, sir. So I wanted to have the opportunity to just go over a lot of the capital improvement work that is going on throughout the district this summer. I'm going to start with discussing a little bit the GIS roof project, which the board is authorized to move forward. So I'm just going to pass around and not print a lot of these because they are color, and we know how much colored ink costs. So one of the things that we have been dealing with with getting ready for this roof replacement is the GIS roof above the gymnasium. And as we know, there's been a significant concern regarding leaking going on there for an extended period of time. And as you can see on that part of the roof replacement, there's one particular area that seems to be holding a lot of water where the roof is deteriorated and really come to the end of its useful life, if you will. One of the things that was determined was that we would at least want to patch that roof before we went to full roof refurbishment. Well, at the recommendation of our architect, the contractor that Mr. Freeze had designated to come to do the patch, plus the contractor that did the refurbishment at Scotchtown got together and they looked at the issue in its entirety to make sure that even though it was a small expenditure to patch, that it was going to get us through the winter so that we could have full use of the facility moving into the new school year. One of the things that they discovered as they dug into it a little bit more is that there is a full concrete decking that exists right below the roof membrane. And the concern, if you look at the photo where the dark standing stands, is that there's also some flooding over here, if you will, or pounding near where the door to the mechanical room is. So the concern arose is, is truly where they wanted to do the patch, where we need to fix, or is the leak coming from someplace else? So where this landed in a meeting that Ms. Lammer and I were able to sit with with Land Associates last week was, do we put in the submission to SED for approval, an ad alternate for just above the gymnasium for the roof to be fully replaced versus having it be refurbished? That way, we know we have a new roof on there. They would have to do a new buildup for the insulation to beat a code. They would have to replace all the coping and the flashing around the edge as well. They probably have to replace the door in the mechanical room. To be able to meet the budget, one of the things that we were talking about, instead of going to cooperative bid, is to competitively bid it as well. Land is very confident that we could save a significant amount of money by doing that. Again, you know, you don't have the guarantee of a contractor, but I did ask them to go forward and prepare those documents to make sure that before they go to SED that we will have it as an ad alternate on there. I've asked Land before the submission goes up from my SED to prepare to come to speak directly to the board. We hope that's going to be at the meeting on September 5th. Anything that I can address on JS before I move on to Scotchtown and CJ Hooker? So Scott, the Scotchtown project is moving along very well. We had a couple of holdups that we are now well past, thank goodness. One of the most challenging parts of that was getting the new transformer installed in cooperation with Orange and Rockland. After much arm twisting and arm pulling, Orange and Rockland finally came with a 300 kilovolt new transformer. Mr. Freeze spent a late night with them on Friday evening, and we were back up and running after early Saturday morning, as shared an email to the community as well. That has allowed the rest of the project to move on pretty quickly. They're now on to the rooftop cabling in and piping in the condensing units into the blower units in the main rooms. All the asbestos abatement is done, the flooring has been redone. The only thing, two things that could linger into second shift after school starts. There's a new line set that has to go up the wall out of the, from the classroom, from the blower units in the classrooms to the rooftop decks. It's only piping, it's insulated piping. It's unsightly, there's no danger. If they occupy the room, they would be coming in on second shift to do those enclosures. And then to finish some of the steam piping in the crawl space underneath, they would be in the boiler room there at second shift. We are going to need all of that time up until school year, as we had told the faculty. It said, please don't anticipate being in your classrooms right until the day that you have to return. We are going to need all that time between the construction work finishing and the maintenance crew being able to get in there and clean and polish the floors and get all the furniture put back in place. But they, they're trending to use all of that time, but the work is coming along very well. Scotchtown, let me clarify further. Last part is CJ Hooker, and again, I'll send around some photos that you can see, and thank you, Mr. Freeze, for getting into the building to get me these photos today. As we know, in the transfer to capital monies, we approved, the board approved being able to abate all of the flooring in that classroom, take any of the asbestos out of the flooring and be able to replace the flooring. They were able to complete three rooms. In doing that, there was some small marking and damage along the walls. They're in there patching the walls now, being able to get that ready for the new school year. They will go through, they'll patch those walls, and those rooms will be painted. And those rooms will have a nice new fresh facelift for the beginning of the year. The goal will be, again, as we had talked about previously, moving forward, if we can maintain that transfer to capital money in our budget to be able to get through and do two to three rooms that are in need of replacement each school year. I think, Mr. Freeze, we talked about a number of about 15 rooms total in the building that we'd want to get to.
Yeah, I thought it was 12.
12, 12 rooms, and that would be able to get to, so over the next couple of years, we'll at least at a bare minimum be able to improve the flooring situation. And as we talked about, some of those had in fact become a safety hazard. The carpet had started to curl, it was beyond repair in some places, so now the flooring will be addressed, and we'll be able to start to think about other maintenance and programmatic improvements in the classroom as we move forward as well. Anything else on CJ Hooker? So finally, before we get to the agenda, the resolutions for personnel agenda tonight, I'd like to introduce three of our new appointees that are going to be on the agenda tonight. I'm going to start at my right. Allow you to introduce yourself to the Board of Education. First will be our new physical education teacher at Scotchtown Avenue, Rich Sternkopf. Rich?
Hi, how's everyone doing today? Thanks so much, Dr. Coats. Thank you also to the Board of Education for putting your trust into me as a teacher. I'm thrilled to start the new school year as a physical educator. Goshen has been a special place to my family and I over the years. Big reason why we live here, and our kids are in district. But to be a part of this district now as a, in the professional capacity is a dream come true. So really look forward to getting to everyone and becoming a gladiator. Thank you again.
Next, I'll keep moving from right to left. Ms. Marie Hawn, Missy Hawn, I don't know which one I want to be.
I know, I have a lot of names. Thank you, Dr. Coats. Thank you, Board of Education. I'm thrilled to be a part of the Goshen School District and be part of the guidance department and look forward to a lot of exciting things that we'll be able to do there and help propel the students moving forward to achieve what they want. So once again, thank you, and I'm excited to begin my journey here at Goshen.
Missy will be taking over as a guidance counselor and as the new director of guidance at the high school. Finally, all the way over to the left, it is my pleasure to welcome Christine Alina, who will be serving as an INL teacher at CJ Hooker's. Christine?
Well, thank you so much for putting your trust in me as well and choosing me to serve the Ls as well as the other students at CJ Hooker School. Very excited for this year. So again, thank you, and we'll be all working together this year.
Thank you for giving me a chance to introduce our newest employees.
Congratulations again, everybody. Quick follow-up question for you, talking about capital improvements. Have we had any word or updates from the BOC's capital improvement head?
BOCs typically put something out and write into the number in the school district. I have not seen anything. It's fair. Have we seen anything come out in any of the newsletters? But I don't mind sending an email over and see if they can just give me a brief update.
Great. Dr. Coats, are we able to get an update on the security camera? How it's been progressing along with the access control?
Sure. So I would say they are about 60 to 80% of the way there. The first thing that they did moving through the summer was all the new cabling for any new installation of cameras that had to go up. They worked parallel and tandem with the capital improvement at Scotchtown, so they started there first. They've since moved on to the other buildings. They're finally getting here to district office as well, but there's some new cameras in this building that don't exist. They fully anticipate that the installations will be done. The access system, they actually emailed Jim Stare and I today about starting to set up some training, so it's moving along pretty quickly. Some of the card strikes are going to take some additional period of time because we're going to have to print out new cards all the way around the district and re-centralize the print system. I would say followed by late September, early October, everything should be complete.
Thank you. Do, do we also have an update? I know one of the meetings in the past we had that there was a issue brought up about the middle school and the entry of the window for clerk there or the secretary. Did we do anything to shore that up?
So the issue there is because of the weight of putting anything significant in there beyond plexiglass, it would require some reconstruction and reframing. And the issue around that opening is it's all laden with asbestos, so it's not as simple as just reframing. It's something that we have on the document, it's something that's going to be a little bit more significant than just replacing glass.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions? I'm going to take just a half step backwards for a moment before we hop into the Assistant Superintendent Business Report. We wanted to just talk about our committees for a brief moment. We'd like to make a quick switch. John, you'd like to move off of policy and onto negotiations, right? Okay, and we had Shannon, Ashley, Scott on negotiation. Ashley, you were going to step off, right, to allow for the switch? Appreciate you guys. And then, right, you were going to hop over to policy to fill that gap, yes? Okay. All right, very good. Everybody's officially good with that switch? All right, great. That's going to really help out some scheduling conflicts we've had, so. Part settled. Thank you. All right, and now moving on to the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report, Ms. Marie Van Lemmer.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight in your board packets, I have the information for the month of June and your information. But first, I just wanted to let you know that our external auditors were here again last week. That's Shannon and her team from the New York Pausler. And they do have some more work to do back at the office, and they did the majority of their field work here last week. They plan to return in September and finalize the report and share a draft of the audit report with the audit committee, and we'll probably set up a meeting at that time. So probably towards the end of September because they present in October typically for the board. So back to the financial reports, our state aid that we received in June, we received general aid, $1.5 million. Access cost aid, $490,000. BOC's aid, $484,000. We also received some more health and welfare billing totaling $33,000, and our interest earned for the month of June was $104,000. Our budget status reports, these are unaudited. In other words, they're not official yet, so you could see some changes when we come out with the audit report in September, October. But for right now, our total expenses through June were 80.1, $80.1 million, or 96% of our total budget. And the revenue we earned was $83.4 million through the end of the year, and that actually comes to a little more than 100% of our revenue. And I may recall the total budget is $83.7 million, but that's because we appropriated 950. That's right, 1.25 million in fund balance last year for the 2223 budget. So where did the extra revenue come from? Believe it or not, it was interest income, over a million dollars in interest income that was unpredicted over a year ago. So that's the good news. And that's, that's really all I have on the financials. But moving on to the next thing, we have Ryan McKuen here from Nexamp Solar, and he's going to present to us his proposal for a solar pilot in our district.
Super. Well, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thanks for letting me come here and chat to you about this, what I think is a really exciting project for, for the town of Goshen and Orange County in general. And thank you, Dr. Coats and Ms. Lammer for bringing me in as well. We do have a few slides about this project, I believe, that were communicated over. Is it on? It looks like it's on. Yeah, it's on. Great, needs to go. Yeah. I was that well educated. I got that one. All right, great. So if we can just go down to this next slide here so we can all get a little bit oriented with this. This may be a notorious site for some of you. It may be a less notorious site for others. So Nexamp Solar and our subsidiary, Alturi Solar, are proposing, well, I shouldn't say, we're near completion on permitting for a 5-megawatt solar facility to be located on the old Alturi landfill over on Hartley Road there. And so this is a capped landfill. It's been a facility that has two separate sections to it. The northern section was capped in 1993, and the southern section, that's actually a site type, was capped in 2016, not 2006. Altogether, it's four separate parcels totaling just under 115 acres. This facility used to have a natural gas generating facility on it that would gather methane from the landfill that has since been closed out, so it's no longer generating enough methane from the organics in that landfill to operate and has been closed out and capped up. There is a vent operating on site, but it's not generating any power. And so we are actually leasing this facility from Alturi Landfill Incorporated. So we have a lease agreement with them for a site that'll be, give or take, around 25 acres. If we go down to that next slide there, I can take you through the site very briefly. So this is a 5-megawatt AC, 6-megawatt DC facility, like I said, just around 25 acres of total development. This project was approved by Orange and Rockland. We made full payments on our interconnection upgrades. I was giggling to myself when you guys were talking about getting transformers out of Orange and Rockland because that's something we're very familiar with. But we've made all the payments for those upgrades as of June of last year. The facility itself is, it's actually a ballasted system, so different to some of the projects you might have seen. It actually sits on top of the landfill on concrete blocks, so we're not penetrating the landfill or doing any damage to it. There's really no disturbance to this landfill cap at all, and at this point, save one DEC approval that we need for what's called the post-closure management plan, the site is fully permanent. So it's got site plan and special use approval from the town. It's gone through the county process, and we're working through the pilot agreement process with all three jurisdictions currently. So if we go to the next slide, before I get into this, I will ask a quick qualifying question because the world of New York State solar tax law is convoluted at best. Is anyone on this board, by show of hands, familiar with Real Property Tax Law 487, kind of the implications there? Big zero. Cool. I'll go through this very quickly. So in New York State, solar improvements are actually tax-free under state law. It is an opt-out program. So basically jurisdictions, school districts, counties, towns can actually opt out of Real Property Tax Law 487, bringing renewable energy projects back onto the tax rule. This was originally conceived as a way to incentivize rooftop development and make sure if you put a $30,000 roof, solar system on your roof, your assessment on your personal home wouldn't go up overnight. That has been slowly extrapolated out to larger commercial systems. In the case of this, basically, we have to give a notice to any jurisdiction that we are looking to build a project on. They will give us a notice back about whether or not they want to have this. They will give us a notice back about whether or not they want to have this remain tax-free, which most people don't give us that answer. Or if they want it to be entered into what's called a pilot program, so a payment and move taxes program. In this case, we sent out all of our forty, four eighty-seven notices last fall after we made full payments on the upgrades for this system. And then ultimately, we did get a response back from all three jurisdictions that they wanted to enter into pilots. So that's how we've moved forward with this. One of the reasons why this board may have not seen these in the past, may or may not have seen these in the past, is that you have two ways of, of working out a pilot in a four eighty-seven system. One is what's called, it's with jurisdiction. So you can go to each individual jurisdiction, negotiate with them one-on-one. The other way of doing it is going through the Orange County IDA. So to my knowledge, the vast majority of solar projects that have been built and are operating in Orange County have gone through the IDA to date. But the IDA has recently, because of some ambiguity around solar tax law in New York, stopped offering up these pilots, at least temporarily. And so we're actually pursuing kind of a jurisdictional forty-seven pilot where we go to each individual jurisdiction, negotiate with this one-on-one. So that's the high-level forty-seven. I hope I, I hope I covered it in a reasonable way. To jump into the pilot offer, I can go through this very quickly. So unlike what you might do for a pilot agreement on, say, a real estate development, which is kind of a, a different structure, pilot agreements in New York State are done on a capacity basis. So a amount of money offered per megawatt AC. In the case of our project, the offer we put out here is a ten thousand dollars per megawatt AC project, which would be a total of fifty thousand dollars per year, starting in year one, paid out to the jurisdictions in question. You can see the distribution, the standard distribution that would be followed if this was under a standard taxable asset. We're actually proposing a slight deviation to this distribution, which would actually give the county and the town a little bit more of a share of the overall pilot amount than they normally would. The distributions you see there in the middle column are standard distributions. So just under eleven percent to the county, just around twelve percent to the town, and the remaining balance going to the school district. And we've actually proposed on the town's behalf, because they asked us to do this, a slight change to that overall structure. So if we go into that next slide here, I can give you the overall summary of why we're doing that. So because this is a landfill and because it's not us putting a, you know, solar in a field somewhere, it has a lot more monitoring and there's a lot more conditions and things that are imposed with it. So the town and county have both asked for us to, to adjust this distribution because ultimately they're carrying a little bit more of a burden with this project than they would on others. There's more DEC reporting, stormwater reporting, code enforcement reporting and otherwise. And so they're asking for us to offset some of those costs for them in the only way they can, which is through these taxes. So if we go to that next slide there, then we can go through the distribution. So as you can see, this is a fifteen-year payment. That's a fifteen-year agreement. At year sixteen, the project would go back to the standard tax rules. So at year sixteen, goes back standard rules, standard assessment. From there, you know, obviously, we would look at what the evaluation is at that point and project on from that point. But the annual payment, starting in year one, which we anticipate to be probably at this point, early twenty twenty-five, given interconnection timelines and construction timelines on this project, the school district would be getting fifty percent of the overall payments, starting in year one, and that escalates along with the tax cap at two percent per year, totaling just over four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars over fifteen years. So give or take twenty-nine thousand dollars per year on average over the course of the fifteen-year agreement for that system. So with that, I'll totally open up for questions. It's the most important part of this whole dialogue, in my opinion. Happy to, to answer anything you got.
Anybody going once, going twice?
Nothing?
I don't think we have any questions.
It'll be the easiest, easiest meeting I'll have all week, hundred percent. Well, I will leave, yeah, I'll leave a few of my cards here. I have my phone number and my email for anyone who might be interested and want to ask me some other questions offline about this site in particular, or just kind of how Next Amp is operating around the state. We have a lot of these projects and I doubt it'll be the last one here in Orange County. So I appreciate all your time. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, pleasure.
So next on, I reported the school lunch price increases. I needed to just review that with you so we could get it on the agenda more specifically. So just to recap, the lunch prices we're proposing are three dollars for elementary and GIS and three dollars and ten cents for the high school and middle school. That's what's proposed. We serve a total of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five lunches in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So we would generate roughly close to nineteen thousand dollars in revenue, which makes up for this year, we had about a little over nineteen thousand dollars in charges. And when you have charges that don't get collected, we actually have to make them whole from the general fund. So we did have to do an inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the lunch fund to cover that. Twelve thousand dollars of that was elementary and GIS charges and around seven thousand dollars was the middle school, high school amount, give or take in round numbers. So it comes to a total of fifteen cents each, each building as an increase. And I think we shared a report of the loss and profits that the lunch fund has made over the past ten years. And there was that anomaly there with COVID where we went to all free meals, where we made up a big difference. But now we're making that trend again where we are not in the black, so to speak. We are.
Could you just speak a little bit to the background on how we got to the difference in prices between the elementary and the secondary as well?
That would be based on, well, the, not only the amount due or the charges are mostly based in the elementary level, but also based on the survey done throughout the county that Alan done. He did a survey of all the districts to see where they were with their breakfast and lunch prices. And that's why we aren't changing the breakfast, because we are in line with the other school districts. Anybody have any questions?
Just wanted to say thank you for compiling all that data. I know that was a lot of it, but it was much appreciated.
For me, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the assistant superintendent for curriculum, instruction, personnel, and accountability report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Law Office. Good evening, everyone. Just a brief update for you regarding summer curriculum work for summer twenty-three. So throughout the month of May and really the first week of June, we put together all of our proposals for summer curriculum work throughout the district. We had met with principals here in cabinet meetings and we had asked that all proposals aligned with our strategic plan and two goals listed in our strategic plan. Through that, we were able to identify five specific areas and one miscellaneous area, if you will, that teachers were permitted to choose to propose the summer curriculum project. So in brief, I will tell you, we focused on creation of lessons and activities to strengthen and facilitate safe, respectful and engaging school community. Of course, that's aligned with our first goal, creation of curriculum maps, scope and sequence documents. With that, we brought in some programs through Educational Vistas, which would be the curriculum mapper program and also the Data Mate program. We had asked for any PPS initiatives and program development initiatives to be brought forward. We also asked for any enrichment or vertical articulation activities to be proposed, creation of activities and supplemental material, supplemental materials for our special area classes. And then we left a wide-open other category for any project that any of our professional staff would choose to propose or any projects that our principals would like to see in addition to what we've already discussed. With that, we did send out a Google workflow. So everyone was able to first respond through a Google form and then each response triggered an email that went directly to the principal for review and if he or she chose approval. On approval, then it would come to me for final approval. This year, we had approximately seventy proposals, which equates to about sixty individuals who had proposed projects, which I think is a very good number, district-wide. After going through the review, first with principals and directors and then to my office, we've awarded over nine hundred hours this year for summer curriculum work. Just to highlight some of the broad-range projects, if you will, social media, marketing, curriculum maps. Actually, Mr. Quinlan is here with us. We have the contemporary drama class. He'll be creating a scope and sequence and a mixed curriculum map for that course. We're looking into the drone program to utilize the drone grant that we've secured. So we've got a few individuals that will be putting together what will first most likely start off as a club after school and then roll directly into some of our programming for credit, for school credit. We opened up vocational internship program this year. So Ms. Longwitty is actually working on placing and developing some of that workflow. And then there's some edits to our MTSS, specifically tier two throughout our building. So as you can see, we've, we've got a wide range of projects that our teachers will be working. Again, you know, all of these projects, we had asked to be aligned with our strategic plan. And I believe after our review, all of them do align. So again, we're very grateful that our teaching staff, our professional staff wishes to take part in, in summer curriculum work. And I'm very happy to be able to approve those with the support of the school board and of course, our central office administrators. So thank you for that. Last time I had an opportunity to speak about Scholastic, I know that there were a few questions about materials, specifically about training. So I did gather as much information as I can. Actually, on August fourth, we had a very large delivery for Scotstown Avenue and for Goshen Intermediate School at Goshen Intermediate School, including the large bookroom. And then also CJ Hooker received all of their materials. So everything is going through the process of being properly inventoried. With that, we looked for anything that might be missing and so on. The company has been great in working with us. Also, we're working currently with their technology departments, a properly rostered, not only our students, but also our teachers, so that all the digital materials can be accessed as quickly as possible. I just checked in this evening with Mrs. Hooker, representative, just to check to see where we're at with that. She said her team is working right now to wrap up the students and move directly into getting our teaching staff, their digital access. Also, we were able to secure the two D agreement. So we've got that signed off on, on both ends, which allows us to move forward with the digital rostering, which is really important. And finally, we have our training dates that I'll go through briefly with you. September thirteenth and fourteenth will be grades two, five and six here in central office. September eighteenth and nineteenth, we have grades one, four and six here in district office. And September twentieth and twenty-first, K three and six here in district office. As we move forward beyond those in-person training days, we also have in-person coaching days planned. We're still looking for the dates in October for the training team to arrive in the buildings. And then also, we do have one solidified for November seventh. So as you can see, we're trying to wrap up quickly those training dates and get everybody exactly what they need to move forward with this new program. Tomorrow, GIS teachers do have an opportunity to pick up some of their kits. So they will have materials at hand to start looking through those, previewing and preparing for the school year. I'd like to thank the staff there at GIS. I know Mr. Long, you know, he's been working real hard to get all those boxes unpacked. And of course, Dr. Wentworth and his team in organizing those to pack them up for the teachers. And that will eventually make its way through Scotstown, of course, to be, we have got some physical logistical issues to have to deal with right now, but we'll do as quickly as possible. So we're quite comfortable with where we're at moving forward with Scholastic. And that concludes my report for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Nope. All right. Thank you. Before we move on into our next portion of the meeting, anybody who stepped in after the start of the meeting, just a reminder, if you'd like to sign up for the floor, there is a sign sheet in front. So please come on down as we go through all of our business. Right. Moving on, I need a motion for approval of consent agenda. Shannon, John, be resolved upon the superintendent, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? I need a motion to approve minutes. Brett, Ashley? Be resolved upon this recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes of the July tenth, twenty twenty-three annual reorganizational meeting and regular board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? We have no old business here, so moving on to new business. I need a motion to approve the execution of consent order and judgment and tax tertiary refund. John, Billy? Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes its attorneys Shaw, Aronson, May, Lambert, LLP to execute a consent order and judgment in a tax tertiary proceeding caption SDB Wallkill v. Town of Wallkill and Goshen CSD. Be further resolved that the Board authorizes the refund of taxes as required by the terms of the consent order and judgment. Be further resolved that in order to fund said tax tertiary judgment refund, budgetary appropriations for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year shall be increased and that the tax tertiary judgment refund amount be transferred to the general fund budget from the tax tertiary reserve as the offsetting source of revenue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right. I need a motion to approve, amend the Orange Ulster School District's Health Plan Municipal Cooperation Agreement. Right, Scott and Billy? Whereas the Goshen Central School District is a, district is a member of a self-funded municipal cooperative agreement health plan known as the Orange Ulster School District's Health Plan under Article five G of New York's general municipal law. And whereas the participating members desire to provide certain health, medical and dental benefits to certain of their respective employees, retirees and their dependents. And whereas the plan's Board of Directors has amended the municipal cooperative agreement, clarify the management of meetings and stipulations related to withdrawing and entering the plan. Now therefore, be resolved that the municipal cooperative agreement amended July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three is ratified and accepted by the Goshen Central School District's Board of Education. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? I need a motion for twelve point four to approve the overnight trip of the girls' soccer team. Brett and John? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendents of schools, the Board of Education approves the overnight trip for the girls' soccer team to participate in the NYSSCOGS Hall of Fame Tournament in Latham, New York from September, from September ninth through the tenth, twenty twenty-three. Be further resolved that the Board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of any emergency condition outside of the control of the school district in its sole discretion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? I need a motion to approve twelve point five, the Agreement for Special Education Services Occupational Therapy Registered Services. I have Ashley and Shannon? Be resolved, the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Orange County Therapy Group to provide occupational therapy registered services for students in need of such services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year at a rate of ninety dollars per hour for up to three hours per week. Be further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? I need a motion for twelve point six to approve the Agreement of Special Education Services Physical Therapy Services. I have John and Shannon? Be resolved, the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Orange County Therapy Group to provide physical therapy services for students in need of such services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year at a rate of ninety dollars per hour for up to three hours per week. Be it further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute such agreements. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for twelve point seven to approve the Agreement for Special Education Services Nursing Services. Brett and Scott? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves entering into an agreement with AccuCare Nursing and Home Care to provide nursing services to special education students in need of self-services effective July first, twenty twenty-three, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, according to the terms set forth in said agreement. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor? Post? I need a motion to approve twelve point eight, the Agreement for Special Education Services Independent Educational Evaluation. Ashley, Billy? Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education approves entering into an agreement with educational neuropsychology neuropsychological services, PLLC, to conduct an independent educational evaluation according to the terms set forth in said agreement. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? I need a motion for twelve point nine to approve individual agreements for Special Education Services, sub-allocation of I D E A A R P six eleven and six nineteen funds. Scott and Ashley? Be resolved upon this recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education enters into individual agreements with Field of Dreams Preschool, Center for Spectrum Services, the Art Greater Hudson Valley, New York, the Center for Discovery, Inspire Kids, and Learning Together, to provide special education services for students and for the district to sub-allocate I D E A A R P six eleven and six nineteen funds to said providers on a first-student basis for the grant year between July first, twenty twenty-one, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Those in favor?
Aye.
Post? I need a motion to approve twelve point ten, the senior class trip to Orlando, Florida. Billy? Brett? Be resolved upon this recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education approves the high school senior class trip to Orlando, Florida from March twenty-first through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that the board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of any emergency condition outside of the control of the school district in its sole discretion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Right, and we have an, we want to wave on that. We have the agenda prepared to increase the school lunch prices. Was everybody satisfied with the information that received and are ready to approve? Okay, great, so that's an informal yes. I need a motion for twelve point eleven, approve the increase to lunch prices for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. I have John and Ashley? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the increase in school lunch prices as follows. Scotstown Avenue School and the Intermediate School from two seventy-five to two ninety. C J Hooker Middle School and Goshen High School from three dollars to three ten. All those in favor? Post? I don't believe we have any additional signups, right? Good, all right, so on to any board member issues, board member comments? I did have one item for board member comments. It wasn't too long ago, actually, it was a year ago, that we had this other governance training, and one of the items we discussed were board goals and board agenda. So I think it's a good time, being that we're closing in on the summer, starting the school year with our new governance training to come up, to maybe start thinking about that a little bit. If anybody has any board goals they'd like to bring to the table that we can talk about and start thinking about. We have a lot going on with policy, code of conduct, and five-year plan. One item that came to mind, as a, for instance, was we have our kind of initial board member handbook. Maybe that's something we could look at and officially adopt. You did a nice job of getting us started on that. So anything else that comes to your mind that maybe we'll revisit, set some goals, I think it'd be a good idea. Great? Okay, I need a motion for moving into executive session. John, Billy? Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to matters leading to the appointment of particular
Aye.
Post? All right, thank you very much, everyone.